Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Neshamani School Board September 28th, 2022, to order. Jennifer, may I have the roll up? Donna? A roll call, please. Present.
Mr. Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
She's absent with prior notice.
As is Mr. Kovacs.
Kovacs. Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Sure looks it.
Mr. Sporni?
Present.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met an executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Agenda 105, we have announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I have an announcement.
Where's yours?
I'd like to put this press release on the record, and after I'm finished with it, I would ask the administration to please publish this in all media outlets, as well as send it to all Neshamani internal email addresses. The Neshamani School District and the Neshamani Employee Support Personnel Association, NESPA, began negotiating for a new contract in December of 2021. The existing contract expired on June 30th, 2022. The district agreed with the union's bargaining framework called informal bargaining, with limiting the number of items each side brought to the table in an effort to streamline the process. On Saturday, September 17th, 2022, after having a proposal in its hand for four months, the NESPA membership turned down the package that the two sides had agreed on as a result of the money bargaining sessions, which took place throughout the spring, often with the state mediator present. The proposed contract had total wage increases over 4% for each of the five years, increasing the total cost to the district and taxpayers approximately $3.4 million over the life of the contract. As part of the total wage package, in years two through five, the contract, two through five of the contract, the district agreed to move employees up from the new employee wage rate to the grandfather wage rate, as the association made it known that this was a priority in the beginning of the bargaining sessions. The result of this move up is that a number of bargaining unit members would have received raises of between 19 and 38% in the year of the wage adjustment. The district had also conceded that the two-tier benefit plan for the employees in the current collective bargaining agreement would be eliminated. By agreeing, by agreeing to eliminate the two-tier benefit plan, bargaining unit members would have had quicker access to health benefits, as well as holidays and vacation time, and there would no longer be any probationary period for benefits to begin for eligible employees and their dependents. As a cost-saving measure, the district sought to introduce a high deductible plan as one of the health insurance options for the bargaining unit members, but with the employer contribution to a health savings account for the association members who selected the high deductible plan in order to offset the impact on bargaining unit members of the higher deductibles. Neshamani's Board of School Directors and Administration are extremely disappointed in the outcome of the vote, in that we would have worked through the association's recommended process, and despite assurances and repeated requests that this process would include a recommendation from NESPA's Bargaining Committee to the general membership to approve the proposal, that did not occur. While the district is ready to reengage in what could turn out to be long and arduous process, the district has conveyed that the offer that had been agreed upon is the uppermost limit of burden that we have, as your elected representatives believe our taxpayers will support. This was and is the absolute final best offer before the bargaining process starts over. We hope NESPA leadership will engage with the membership to reconvene in reconsideration of this proposal. The district believes that the offer is fair on both sides and would benefit from a settlement.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Are there any other announcements?
No further announcements.
Thank you. Moving on. Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Since we met last, we had Elementary Back to School Night last Thursday. I don't know if I mentioned it, I can't remember what I did yesterday sometimes, but my favorite part of Elementary Back to School Night is a big dad sitting in the elementary chairs in the kindergarten classroom. It cracks me up, so thank you for all those dads who played along with me. Tomorrow night is the Middle School Back to School Night, and then the following Thursday, on October 6th, is High School Back to School Night. So I ask that parents come out and meet their children's teachers, and if for nothing else, it's a nice community event. It puts everybody in the same building with the same goal, and it really is a nice, nice way to get together on a Thursday evening. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is coming to an end. We went gold and had a lot of themes last week or the week prior. I would have never guessed that Sarah would be so successful as a sixth grader. It happened throughout the district. Costumes in my HR department, people throughout the district dressing up to support this. So, well done, Sarah, and thank you for making us be a better organization at your young age of in the sixth grade. Our art program has received recognition for the four years in a row, for the fourth year in a row, from the Pennsylvania Art Education Association, so congratulations to our art staff and students, and beginning next month, we'll have displays of student work in this boardroom. Some good news, the state has found its way to provide free breakfast for all students beginning October 3rd. Can anyone confirm that? Don's not here. So, yes, it is, is October 3rd, so beginning Monday. So that is, that is great news, if you want breakfast and you no longer have to, or you can continue not having to pay for it. That does not apply to lunch. That was the change in the federal regs. Getting some bad press on why we didn't jump onto the free lunch for all that some other districts have. We could not jump onto it because we don't meet the threshold of families who meet the criteria, so we don't qualify for free lunch. We do qualify for free breakfast. Continuing on, staffing continues to be good, but that said, we are not out of the woods yet. As we get into the year, the normal staffing issues, as with you, sometimes you need the day off, whether it be personal reasons, sick reasons, family reasons, et cetera, people have to take off from work. We are not staffed well enough in some areas to get through that without some pain. So hopefully, in the teacher area, we have enough to do that, but probably in the support staff area, bus drivers, custodial, instructional assistants. So if you're looking for work and can spend a couple days or a couple hours with us, we are hiring. And finally, as we get into the nuts and bolts, the school years out of the gate, just some help from parents, how you can help be a set of eyes and ears to both your school's administrative team and teachers. We have the Home Access Center. If you could check that as frequently as you check your horoscope or your fantasy football scores, that would be great. On there, you'll find your children's grades, their attendance, and in some cases, some discipline you may not have known about. So keep an eye on that. You can be the eyes and ears as well for us. In addition, we have a piece of software called Canvas, where they can find their daily lessons for that particular day, and so can you. So at the elementary level, they're pretty extensive. At the secondary level, just a framework of what's going on, so we can always go back and take a look at them. Moms, dads in K through four can actually work through them, if you want to, throughout, to rehearse what happened on a given day, or what happened when you were absent. And then finally, at the K through five level, we have something called MyPath, which is both math and reading, that if you so choose, moms and dads, you can put your child on this for 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes throughout the week, that it's an individualized, differentiated learning plan based on what they know, what they don't know, what they need to rehearse. So what you can do and add value to what we do during the day, all the things that came out of the pandemic that were bad, we have a whole bunch of good things that take what we do in school and make it available at home. So, Mr. Allen, that's my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Do we own agenda items? Do we have any signups?
We have two signups. The first one is Mary Jane Ozminski.
Approach the podium. Mindful of three minutes. Time limit, please.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Mary Jane Ozminski. I am a special instruction assistant at Maple Point Middle School.
Is this one an agenda item?
It's with Dr. McGee. I wanted to talk to you today regarding the shortage of special instructional assistants in our district. Because of the shortage, many of the instructional assistants are often pulled from their daily assignments to help in other specialized areas, in the buildings that have to be fulfilled. They are also asked to change and/or flex their hours to accommodate children in the beginning and the end of the day. Sometimes they even end up staying late to help during specials and when to get these students on their buses. Many of the special ed instructional assistants stay because they live in the district and care about the children. There is definitely a need for more special ed instructional assistants to be full-time, as of today, we only have 12 full-time in the district. This is simply not enough with the number of students with IEPs. Every time a full-time special ed instructional assistant resigns or retires, they are replaced with a part-time special ed IA. A majority of our special ed instructional assistants are PT, are part-time. These IAs are the same IAs, I said, are often asked to change or flex their hours to accommodate these students and to stay late. In some buildings, the building subs are asked to fill in for the special education assistance, because there's not enough of them in the building. The children need consistency and the dependency of our certified staff and our special ed instructional assistants. I am asking the board, I'm sorry, I'm asking the board to reevaluate this classification based on the needs of our children and our students. I'm asking for more full-time special ed instructional assistant positions and to stop replacing our full-time people with part-time. I also want to ask, talk about Neshamani has become the training ground for classifications. Many ed, special ed instructional assistants come to this district and gain experience, and then they leave to work in surrounding districts within six to your months to a year, leaving us for shorthanded again. They end up leaving and going to Pensbury and Council Rock, because they're being paid more money and receiving health benefits, and also whatever they want, part-time or full-time, and more time off. I'm asking the board to also reevaluate the wage for the special education instructional assistants. Last year, Transportation Department was given two wage increases in the total of $4, for the same reason, they can't get good, qualified people to work in this classification and stay. This has been a longstanding issue for years, even before COVID. These special ed instructional assistants were dedicated to these students and worked side-by-side with them during the pandemic, because they care about these kids and want to see them succeed.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Rightfully, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Rightfully, that should have been at the second discussion period. These are agenda items only.
Second person is Barbara Costa.
And this is on an agenda item?
No, just what you just said.
Following our second period. Thank you. Any other signups for agenda items? Anyone else wish to approach the podium for agenda items only? Thank you. Brings us to routine matters. I'd like to make a motion to combine and approve Agenda Items 2.01 to 2.06. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. There any discussions on those items?
I would just ask for each thing to be read into the record. 2.01 is minutes.
2.02, Treasurers' Report. 2.03, the check, register, and procurement card purchases. 2.04 are bids. 2.05 are investments. 2.06 are exonerations. It has a second further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. That brings us to Personnel Certificated. Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 3.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. 3.02, Appointments. 3.03, Leaves of Absence. 3.04, Revised Leaves of Absence. 3.05, Revised Return-Some Leave. 3.06, Co-Curricular Appointments. And 3.07, Federal State-Funded Personnel Summary.
There's a motion on the floor. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any discussions on those items? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. Am I still correct with that? That brings us to Agenda Item 4, Personnel Support. Ms. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a master motion for 4.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. 4.02, Appointments. 4.03, Leaves of Absence. 4.04, Revised Leaves of Absence. 4.05, Ancillary Appointments.
Is a motion on the floor? Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any discussions on those items? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. Brings us to Business Oper, am I right on that? Business Operations, Mr. Cirillo. Would you take us through 5.01, please?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.01, 2022-2023 Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, Homestead/Farmstead District Agreement. Whereas the Bucks IU has coordinated with the Bucks County Assessment Office and RTI Inc. in order to fulfill district responsibilities under Act 1, the district shall pay to the Bucks IU the actual cost per parcel, plus postage, and any other costs associated with the cooperative organization, printing, advertising, and mailing of the homestead exclusion notices in December 2022. Be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached Homestead/Farmstead District Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. A motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hollenbach. Any discussion on 5.01? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. That brings us to Item 5.02. Mr. Sporni, will you take us through that, please?
I'd like to make a motion for 5.02, Approval of Civil Engineering Surveying and Geotechnical Agreement with Gilmore &amp; Associates. Whereas the Neshamani School District desires to build additional middle school classrooms at Proquesting Middle School, and whereas the, whereas concept designs and programming have been preliminarily outlined by Spiesel Architectural Group, Inc., a qualified architecture firm, and whereas civil engineering, surveying services, and stormwater infiltrations services are needed to explore site conditions that may include, but are not limited to, the site's soils conditions, environmental conditions, available of site utilities, local site restrictions, zoning, environmental wetlands, and other impacting factors to determine a location, if practical, for construction of the existing building, and whereas upon determination that the site on Proquesting Middle School grounds is found to be suitable for the construction of the existing building, additional civil and environmental engineering will be required. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamani School District authorizes the business administrator to enter into an agreement with Gilmore &amp; Associates, Inc., dated September 6, 2022, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor, which provides basic civil engineering services to determine the suitability and feasibility of the Neshamani School District's Proquesting Middle School grounds for the construction to the existing building in an amount not to exceed $59,100 with one attachment.
Thank you, Mr. Sporni. A motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussions or questions on that agenda item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. That brings us to 5.03. Mr. Sullivan, please.
5.03, Field Turf Change Order Number 1. Whereas the Neshamani Board of School Directors approved and hired field turf to improve the Neshamani High School athletic fields, and whereas in any construction project, there may be change orders which need to be approved, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani School District authorize the district business administrator to authorize the attached change order with field turf with a revised date of August 11th, 2022, subject to review, revisions if necessary, and approval by the district solicitor, in an amount not to exceed $24,244, and there are file attachments.
Back, Mr. Sullivan. There's a motion on the table. Does that have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Hollenbach. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. Just to you, 5.04, I'd like to make a motion to table that. We need further discussion on that, I believe. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Anyone have any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That item is tabled to further notice for the discussion. Brings us to 5.05. Sunday, Ms. Lafferty, take us through that, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 5.05, Sunday Facility Usage. Whereas according to Board Policy Number 800, facilities, fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approve Sunday usage for, Fertabar Home and School Association has requested Sunday usage for Proquesting Middle Schools parking lot on Sunday, October 23rd, 2022, with a rain date of Sunday, October 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty. The motion has been made. Does it have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sporni. Any comments or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. That brings us to Agenda Number 6. Ms. Lafferty, please, again.
I'd like to make a motion, 6.01, Out-of-District Placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous, advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below. There is one student on the list.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty. Does that motion have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes 6-0. Just to our close of the business, close of the meeting. Is there any other board business to be brought before us? Seeing none? That brings us to our second round of public comment. May you approach the podium, state your name, your address, and be mindful of a three-minute limit. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Costa. I am an IA here at Maple Point Middle School. I started in 2015 with ESS. In 2017, I was hired by Neshamani for $16.16. Today, five years later, I make $17.93. A $1.77 raise over five years, far less than what the bus drivers got just last year. We are short-staffed. We're here, we, all of us, I speak for all of us, we love our students. We can't compete with the other schools. People come and leave, and they leave us shifting our schedule, morning, staying late, coming in early, doing all different jobs, which is fine. We love doing that, but we need to be with the students that we're with. I am in specialized learning support, and I need to be there all day long. They need us, and they need, they need quality help, and we can only do that by equaling what the other districts pay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, remember, three-minute timeline. Name, address.
Hi, my name is Anna Borzos. I live in the district. My children went through the district. I went through the district. I've worked for Neshamani for 18 years as an instructional assistant. I work in the emotional support classroom at Hoover. I work very hard. I am there for my children. I do, I've been on the Schwab's Committee for, since Bill Gritsula at Lower South. That's Exter and above. I stay later. I come in early, all the time. We have had a lot of instructional assistants leave to go to Pensbury, to go to Council Rock, because of the pay situation, not having full time. You can't tell me that we are not out of compliance of IEPs, because I leave at 3:05, and I have children that don't have somebody with them. So I just need you to look at it seriously, think about all these women and men that work very hard. Thank you.
My name is Michelle McKay. I am an employee in Neshamani. I'm a secretary in the People's Services Department. I also am a parent of two Neshamani graduates. I am a Neshamani graduate, and my husband is a Neshamani graduate, resident of the district as well. And I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but I just felt it cannot go without saying that after Mrs. Hollenbach made that opening speech, so that the taxpayers were aware, she, you know, said, well, we gave them a, you didn't use the word generous, but you made it, the assumption was there, generous 4% increase. I want the taxpayers to hear, you heard these ladies, $16 and $17 an hour, figure out what 4% of that is. It's less than a dollar an hour. They're working five, five and three-quarter hours a day. Figure out what that is in your paycheck. I can tell you, in my paycheck, that 4% raise is going to amount to less, approximately a dollar an hour. I work seven hours a day, so $7 more in my paycheck per day because of the big woo-hoo 4% raise. However, my health insurance premiums, as everybody's, will go up. My contribution to my health insurance premium is going, would have gone up in that contract that we wrote it down, from 12% to 14%. And while some people may say, that's not that much, if you have family coverage, they're also raising that to 20%. So raise my insurance premium contribution from 12% to 20%, give me a 4% raise, which amounts to about a dollar an hour. My paycheck will be smaller when I come home at the end of the week. I work hard. I do a very good job. I support this district well, and we just, we want fair, we want to be paid fairly. We want to be respected. We want to be appreciated, and that, you know, words only go so far. We need it to be in our paychecks. You know? You know what the cost of living is. I'm sure most of you know, if you don't, you should, what the cost of living increase to Social Security was this year. I think it was 5.8%. So the 4% would even fall below that, and that was in the first year of the contract, and each year of the contract, it would have gone down. And the contract would call for kicking my spouse off my health insurance plan. Now he has to go get his insurance from his employer, who has a really lousy plan, high deductible. The reason I came to work for Neshamani School District is because I needed the benefits that I could get through working for a public sector. Yes, the salary was lower than I could have made because I'm a trained secretary, but the benefits made it worthwhile. Well, now they want to kick my husband off the insurance, and I'm going to have to pay premiums to two different employers, my employer and my husband's employer, high deductible plan, thousands of dollars it would cost me to keep my husband on his, to get him onto his insurance because it's, you know, $700, $800 a month to his premiums and my premiums and then his deductibles. So just know, it's not, it wasn't that great of a deal.
All right, understand, we cannot address that from the board.
I understand. Just wanted it out there in the public. Like you as well.
That's fine.
I would just like to follow up with what Mr. Allen said. We are listening, and I will direct you back to the press release and how it was worded and what we said. I mean, we came to the bargaining table with what your representation asked us to discuss. So, specific topics, again, we can't discuss. You should, you guys need to discuss that yourselves and come to the whole.
That brings us to board comment. Anyone have a comment? Mr. Cerullo?
I do, actually. Just want to remind everybody, I guess specifically at the high school, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McGee, but I believe tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Gym 1 at the high school is a college fair. So I'm not sure if everybody realizes that, but obviously, it's that time of year for juniors and possibly seniors as well to look into other options as they, as they move away from the Neshamani family. That's it.
Seeing none, no further comment from the board. I'd like to wish those who are celebrating a Happy New Year. I know that's where a few of us are tonight, or past couple days, anyway. That brings us to future meetings. Let me get set here. We are in September. Our next meeting is, is it the 11th? October 11th is the next work session of the board, 7:00 p.m. in this office. And that's it. Call for an adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Good night, all.